... to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up under presentations, we have a Whitestown Police Department badge pinning ceremony.
Counsel, I'd like to introduce Officer David Sellers to you. Brief history about him, he's a 2005 graduate of Carmel High School, and a 2011 graduate of IU with a BA degree in criminal justice. He's a 2012 graduate of Indiana Law Enforcement Academy. He also served our country in the United States Army as a staff sergeant and did a tour in Iraq from May of 2008 to February of 2009. He was awarded the US Army Commendation Medal and honorably discharged in 2012. He has prior law enforcement experience from the Muncie Police Department where he was a police officer and a school resource officer. He was also a member of the Delaware County Critical Incident Team. We hired him on August 8th of this year, and he completed our field training program on September 26th. He's currently undergoing the process to obtain his PSO certifications. His wife Kaylin will be pinning his badge on him tonight, so if you want to go ahead and do that. And she's told me they practice this at home, so... You can help me welcome Officer David Sellers to WPD.
Welcome, Officer Tyler.
Welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
That's a switch.
Dax? Will you come forward and talk about the waiver that we had discussed going on to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Lauren would like to ask you to add this approval of waiving fees that I just passed out to you. The fee waiver is for all fees related to planning or building permits for a center for, a maternity center that new, it's not New Hope, but it's here in town at the old Willie House on Main Street.
I'd make the motion to add the request for waiver permit fees to new business as item C.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion that's been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Agenda is amended, five to zero. All right, up next we have the Clerk Trezor report. Any questions? All right, moving on to department reports. Any questions on any of the reports?
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes.
I had a couple of, or at least one follow-up question for the parks report. Nathan, I was reading through your report, and I was looking for an update from last month's discussion on completion of the Farm Heritage Trail. Has that been accomplished? You were going to get contractors lined up and get that taken care of?
Everything is completed except the final dirt grading is supposed to be done this week. I have an email from them stating the sub was to have it completed by this week. I'm sorry, I did miss that in the report. I'd forwarded it on to my board and Ms. Austin letting them know the dates on that, but I did kind of forget that in here of the dates. But it is to be completed this week. I was hoping it was completed before today, that way I could say that, but they have until the end of the week to get that complete, according to their email.
So is the full section of the Farm Heritage Trail through Whitestown going to be open all the way through come Saturday?
Up to the end of the water plant, we're looking at paving, because it's stone after that, where the bypass was coming through is stone, and looking at options on paving that. Initially, the board voted not to pave that because the bypass was going to tear it back out. But now they want to look at paving that section, just to have it done, and then when the bypass comes in, because we granted that property over to the county to do the project through there with them knowing that the trail would come and they need to make amenities for the trail coming through.
Okay, but we'll have from, from Main Street heading east to the bypass, and then on the other end of the bypass going to the end of our trail? Is that what you're saying?
Once the last piece is paved, which will be another, which we don't have now, it's under stone now.
Okay.
But once that piece is complete, yes, it'll go to, the property changes to Danny Hockett has a piece of property he purchased last year, and he does work on, look at going south on the spaulding property, working with them to acquire the right of way now.
Okay, and then what are the future plans for connecting up with the Zionsville portion?
When we would do the spaulding piece, it would bring us down to the intersection of, I think it's 40875, the curve, and they have a developer that's developing that south lot, so then the two, once that's developed, they would tie in right there.
All right, thank you.
Regarding, just a question to follow up regarding the landscaping that's going to be done up at the trailhead and any flashing signs, are those going to be installed within the next few days to finish it up?
There was none in the no landscaping and flashing signs in the bid, because it just went with what the state required to be done, because where it was the DNR, the minimum, the $150,000 grant when the project was put together, which the town has gone above and beyond doing things. Landscaping, we were working with the Loves Heroes Project, we were awarded it to come in and do some landscaping, but I'm not sure where that's at. I haven't heard back from them since we came out and did measurements and picked a bunch of plants to be planted. So I need to do another follow-up with them to find out what's going on. We met two weeks ago on that, so I measured everything, but...
This is prime planting time, and if we miss it now, whatever we plant in the spring will have a really hard time of establishing itself. And it looks bad.
I actually do have a follow-up to that section. On the west side of Main, that parking lot, there is a handicap spot, but if someone were to have a wheelchair or any type of walker or something of that nature, when they get out on the handicap spot, they can't cross over onto the trail to then connect up. Is there a way that we can for that section, connect it to the trail?
Yes, it wasn't in the initial, and instead of having them come out to do more work, I've talked to our utilities department. We have guys that, or when they do our sidewalk, will come in and put a piece of concrete that connects the blue hash marks to the trail.
Okay.
That way they can go through, and that's, we've emailed back and forth with DNR making sure all that was okay, and we just want to get this contract closed out and done, instead of trying to add something new to it to delay further.
Thank you.
When do you anticipate closing out this grant contract with DNR?
I have the contract now, I just, once they finish this, I sign it, send it back to the DNR, and we're done with the contract. And they've came out and done the final walkthrough, they gave us a couple items, as they considered minor items for the contract, where I can send pictures back in to show the items were completed, and the only item that hasn't been completed yet is the dirt grading along the trail.
Would you please provide us with a letter from DNR that says that it's all been completed according to the grant and the specifications?
Yes, when I receive that certificate back, I will forward it on.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I don't know if Nathan discussed this, but there's some money in the parks budget that's, did he discuss that? Did I miss that?
Uh-uh. Go ahead, go on to it.
There's some money in the parks budget, I think it's roughly around $72,000, it was earmarked to go towards the Indy Road Trail. The town has fully funded the Indy Road Trail, and what I, my suggestion would be, because I think from an aesthetics perspective, especially for the business owners that have put a lot of hard work into the buildings and legacy core, that priority number one is to get the landscaping complete, at least on the trailheads at east and west of Main, maybe even some, maybe a tree line that hides the incredibly ugly co-op site from the trail as you head east from Main Street to Peters. And so, it's, we've had these discussions, I know I've talked to some of you council members about this, to take that 72,000, move it from being earmarked for, I said earmarked, for the Indy Road Trail, and move it into being used for the remainder of the pavement of the Big Four Trail and the landscaping, with Nathan and Jason working together to get bids for the project and move it forward. It's just my suggestion at this point.
Can we do that at the council level, or does that have to be done at the Parks Board level? You said it was part of the parks.
Well, you all were the ones that created the budget line that stated it specifically had to be used for the Indy Trail. What I'm saying is, I guess, I would assume that you all would be the ones that would give the Parks Board direction that it doesn't necessarily have to be used now for the Indy Road Trail, but you would like it to be used for the landscaping and the remainder of the payment on the Big Four Trail.
I would make the motion that we take that $72,000 and move it over to be used for landscaping and pavement on the Big Four Trail, or at least give the Parks Board the direction that that's what we would like to see done with that money.
I'll second that.
All right, we've got a motion that's been seconded. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion's adopted, five to zero.
Nathan, we can share that in the next Parks Board meeting.
There's already people running today on the Indianapolis Trail, even though it's not quite done, so...
Jason, they've done, and Dax, they've done a fantastic job. I don't know, I know Jason, you happened to mention it, that it's already being used even though it's not completed. Joggers and stuff are already on that trail. Getting a lot of positive comments.
All right, any other questions on department reports? All right, we'll move on to the public request to speak section. I don't have anybody signed up for topics not related to an agenda item. Is there anybody who would like to talk on a topic not related to an agenda item? All right, we'll move on to approval of the consent agenda.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, which contains the approval of meeting minutes from 9/14/2016, claims which include expenses, town revenues, town utility claims, water operating, wastewater operating, and consider the acceptance of grant of easement to Duke Realty.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. All right, consent agenda's adopted, five to zero. Moving on to unfinished business, first we have ordinance 2016-24 on second read, and this is concerning the use of fireworks within the town of Whitestown. I'm going to let our people who signed up to speak go first. First I have Brendan Cavanaugh who signed up.
Good evening, Counsel. My name is Brendan Cavanaugh, 7720 Equal Point Circle, 46077. First, I would like to thank you for the improvements on the ordinance. It has come a long way since the first draft, and I do commend you on that, and thank you for working with myself and many others on the matter. It has helped a lot. However, I do wish that you would consider allowing all weekends, as opposed to just the Labor Day to Memorial, or Memorial Day to Labor Day, in the clause. That would be handier and easier for all families and Mr. Norton to avoid having to pre-plan for permits. And secondly, I would like to address section two, the debris clause. This clause still is practically a de facto ban on aerials, which are probably the most popular of all fireworks. It also ends up encouraging overzealous neighbors to charge people with nuisance and trespass for picking up their trash as written. I'd like to read the part. It does allow, which is nicer, 24-hour pickup, which is one of the things that I was fighting for, but it does state that notwithstanding the foregoing, nothing in this ordinance shall be interpreted to grant permission to any person to discharge, place, and/or land debris on property occupied or owned by another. And the 24-hour removal period required by this ordinance shall not relieve any such user of any applicable civil liability, including but not limited to cause of action for trespass or nuisance. Basically, what this is stating as read, is that you still have to get permission from every single person, regardless of where debris may land. If you don't, you are subject to violation of this ordinance, you are subject to violation of trespass, and you are subject to a violation of nuisance. So I wish that would be reconsidered. Other than that, the ordinance has, like I said, has come a long way, and I think it is nice, but I wish that would be adjusted before passing. Thank you very much.
All right, is there anyone, I don't have anybody else signed up, but is there anyone here who would like to speak on the fireworks ordinance? All right, come on in.
Thank you, Mr. President and Town Council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you before. I appreciate that the town is considering, considering this ordinance. It'll give our families some relief and some better safety. So thank you for the ordinance, thank you for giving families peace in consideration of this and in the wording of the ordinance as it stands. I also appreciate the town's willingness to work with those who desire to use fireworks, such that, that there's an amount of reasonable restriction on the use of nuisance sounds and devices. Thank you for giving our families sleep on weekends. Thank you for giving our families and homeowners recourse against damage to their property. Thank you for retaining fines and other sorts of enforceable penalties in the ordinance. Thank you for considering it. I do hope that you'll take it under consideration today, and that perhaps you might pass it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the fireworks ordinance? All right, before we get started here, I would like, for legal counsel, to address the debris section, and, you know, my read of that is that it is not a de facto ban, and I just want to hear from legal on what you have to say about that.
Yeah, Counselor Miller, I would agree. Reading the provision, I think the intent of it isn't to say that people can't light fireworks off and that there can't be debris going places, but I think the intent is that people aren't permitted to deliberately discharge and fire fireworks over to another person's property in a nuisance-type manner. You know, that's consistent with, you know, the other ordinances of the town on nuisance. This is just tailored more specifically to fireworks lighting off and in those provisions.
I just want to put on the record here that when we were here discussing this last time, I asked for people who had, who were opposed to this to provide me with solutions to address their concerns, and as of a few minutes ago, I've still received no solutions. That was most unfortunate. Sorry, hold on. I did not receive any solutions. If they came to me, I'm not sure how they were delivered to me, because we had to come up with that language internally to improve the debris section. I don't think anybody, one else up here received any proposed language to improve that section either, so... And I think we worked hard on this, to try to work with both sides. I was disappointed that when we were working with the one side, every time we improved something, the goalpost kept moving. That's disappointing, you know, I like working with people and the, let's just, let's have an honest conversation. So, but I think we have, I think we have a pretty good ordinance here in front of us tonight, that balances the interest of both groups of people.
And if I may, you know, I feel the fireworks ordinance that's presented today is a great compromise for both sides. I interpret the debris clause to mean, you may launch it from your own property, and as long as you go pick it up within 24 hours, nobody's going to be upset at you, or there's going to be no penalties for that, so that's how I interpret it in the spirit of the law as it's written, so... I think it's good.
Anyone else?
No, I think it clearly covers my concerns that I spoke last time about the debris afterwards cleanup, but also when somebody launches over somebody else's house, because without permission, that shouldn't happen anyways. If you want to enjoy them, you enjoy them within your space, not necessarily within the space of your entire neighborhood.
Now, the one, the one thing I see in front of us that maybe should be a little different, we might want to consider amending, is that under the special permit section, it probably should be the town manager or the town manager's designate and the Whitestown Fire Chief, because that way it's on two people, and the Fire Chief looks at things a little differently, because obviously, his concerns are different from those of the town manager. So, when we, when we get to a motion, I would certainly appreciate that being amended in.
I don't have concerns with having to ask the town manager or the Fire Chief for permission, I really don't. I just want to make sure, and we probably will, don't get me wrong, I'm not criticizing when I say this, that we make sure that it's easy on the citizens in order to get that permit, that we don't stonewall in any way. And I don't anticipate that we would, I'm just saying that we shouldn't. I'm reading the debris clause two different ways. I'm willing to say that this go-through is now, and let's see if there is a problem with the way it's worded, and then we get back with legal counsel and modify if need be. But in the meantime, just, you know, you've done a lot of work on it, and let's see, let's see where it goes first, I think, at this point.
I think, I mean, I think we should defer to our attorneys who just said that, you know, the concerns aren't there. I mean, you can read any kind of, you can read any kind of law more than one way.
I understand what you're saying.
But there are, this addresses the concerns of the people who don't want debris on their property from, from other people, but, you know, it also gives the person 24 hours to clean it up, which I think is fair. But I would like to see the permit section be the town manager and the, and the Fire Chief, not or.
What are designees?
No, well, it doesn't say fired, right.
No, I think that's completely appropriate, because they are going to look at it through different lenses.
So I would entertain a second read first, and then a motion.
Should we amend the ordinance first and then move to adopt the ordinance?
With the amendments?
As amended?
With the provision on the designate?
Mm-hmm, yeah, okay.
Or have that included in the motion adopting either one?
Well, first I'll make a motion to amend section four of this ordinance.
Five.
Yes, I'm sorry, section five, thank you for everyone, of the ordinance, so that it shall read, made in writing to the town manager or the town manager's duly authorized representative and the Whitestown Fire Chief.
And they're, well, they're duly authorized representative.
Or they're a designate.
All right, second?
Second.
All right, we've got a motion that's been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. All right, motion is adopted, five to zero.
Ordinance number 2016-24, an ordinance concerning the use of fireworks within the town of Whitestown. Mr. President, I move that we adopt ordinance 26, 2016-24 as amended.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and it's been seconded. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Ordinance is adopted, five to zero. All right, up next we have a public hearing for ordinance 2016-34, an ordinance vacating an alley between 301 and 351 East Pierce Street. And at this time, I would open up the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and speak on ordinance 2016-34? All right, seeing no one, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. All right, public hearing is closed. Now on to second read.
Ordinance number 2016-34, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, vacating an alley between 301 and 351 East Pierce Street within the town of Whitestown. Mr. President, I move that we adopt ordinance number 2016-34.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Ordinance is adopted, five to zero. All right, up next we have ordinance 2016-35, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, vacating an alley between 351 and 401 East Pierce Street within the town of Whitestown. And I will open up the public hearing for ordinance 2016-35. Is there anyone who would like to come forward to discuss ordinance 2016-35? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close.
Mr. President, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion that's been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion's adopted, five to zero.
Ordinance 2016-35, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, vacating an alley between 351 and 401 East Pierce Street within the town of Whitestown. Mr. President, I move that we adopt ordinance number 2016-35.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion that's been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Ordinance is adopted, five to zero. All right, up next we have ordinance 2016-39, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, vacating an alley between 505 and 601 East Pierce Street within the town of Whitestown. And at this time, I will open up the public hearing for ordinance 2016-39. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward for the public hearing? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. President, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second. Got a motion that's been seconded. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion's adopted.
Abstain.
Motion's adopted, four to zero.
Oh, I said aye, I'm sorry.
You said aye? Four to zero. She abstained.
Oh, she abstained.
Ordinance number 2016-39, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, vacating an alley between 505 and 601 East Pierce Street within the town of Whitestown. Mr. President, I move for the adoption of ordinance number 2016-39.
Second. All right, we've got a motion and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All right, Clerk Trezor, will you please do a roll call vote?
Counselor Russell?
Aye.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Austin?
Abstain.
Counselor Baum?
Yes.
Counselor Wishig?
Yes.
All right. Ordinance is adopted, four to zero, with Councilwoman Austin abstaining. Up next, we have ordinance twenty sixteen dash forty, an ordinance approving the twenty seventeen town budget.
Ordinance twenty sixteen dash forty, ordinance for the appropriation and tax rates.
I will second.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt ordinance twenty sixteen dash forty.
You still second?
Second.
All right, we've got a motion, and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I would just remind all department heads that just because we approved it does not mean this is what DLGF is going to give us, and do not start spending your two thousand seventeen budget.
Yep, we won't know for a while. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, ordinance is adopted, five to zero. Up next, we have discussion of an RFP for Town Solid Waste Services. Dex?
So you should have a handout in front of you. If you remember, this came up, must have been in July. And so there are some questions in that handout, which, if I could print in color, would have made it a lot easier, because it has been red. I can't at the moment. Some technological difficulties with Windows ten's upgrade. So I think, you know, I've, let me, Matt, do you have, do you have this handout? Can I borrow yours?
I believe the red line is actually pretty self-explanatory, where it says clarification. So what is desired commencement date? Currently, the bidding documents are crafted for three-year base bid, five-year alternate. All of these are questions that we would like the council to consider, probably over the next month, and answer prior to getting this RFP to the solid waste companies. The goal here is to get a, a single low rate for solid waste removal townwide. We believe in, with this process, that we can actually get a lower rate than even the HOAs have contracted with. Obviously, we don't know what that is, because it has not been bid out. But we do believe that it's in our best interest to send the RFP out, to see if, in fact, we can get that. This would include recycling, tox away days, Christmas tree pickup if we so desire, things such as that. And it would be included likely, if we, if you so desired, and I think it's one of the questions, it would likely be included on the utility bill, so that the utilities can collect the monthly rate for solid waste removal. So we just wanted to let you know that we've been working on it. These are questions that we need to answer over the course of the next thirty days. Obviously, we won't do those tonight, but it would be nice to have it on the November agenda to get this RFP out and bid and ready for January, if we so choose to move forward with this opportunity.
Thank you for your work on this.
There's been a lot of chatter in some of the neighborhoods about how, even though they have contracts, those rates are, they're all, all across the board. They fluctuate quite often. They're rising, and so this would lock us into a contract on a single rate that would be more consistent. We would not, in our ordinance, state that you couldn't use somebody else. We would never want to do that. Obviously, the RFP, the company that would win the bid, would want however majority of people to use their service, so that's why it becomes a lower rate, because they want to keep those residents on their plan, so. Just a discussion item. I'd like it to be on the agenda in November, so I'd like us to answer these questions over the course of the next thirty days.
And I would just like for everybody to consider those people who are outside the residential neighborhoods and how we potentially could include them on the services. Not everybody is right off of Main Drive. They could be on five fifty. They could be out on West three hundred. They're not within a neighborhood or subdivision. And they should be able to benefit as well.
Is it, so is it possible to include that in here?
Well, for this, everybody in the town would be included.
Okay.
So, what I'm saying is that there are some HOAs that already have contracts with some of the service providers, and, and what you're saying is that the Legacy Core doesn't have an HOA, therefore doesn't have a contract with a service provider, neither do our rural areas. So they don't have that opportunity. Well, this would give everybody townwide an opportunity, because if you live within town limits, you would be in this bid, and you would get that rate.
And we could set them up with some sort of billing, if we're doing the billing.
So, we'll get this over before next month, and let's have this on the agenda, ready to go.
Thank you for your hard work on this.
Yep.
I appreciate it. Mine just came up for renewal.
Welcome.
All right, let's move on to new business. Letter A, ordinance twenty sixteen dash forty-three.
So this is the addition of, I've already talked to you about this in this position. This is the addition, adding the position of Fleet Department Superintendent. We believe that time has come. We've talked about creating a Fleet Department for quite some time. There's a lot of vehicles running around here. There's a lot of work orders.